Village Board meeting to order, please rise for the House.
I am here to represent the United States of America and see the Republic which stands under God, indivisible, Beauty and Justice for all.
Welcome. This is the opportunity now for any public comment that anyone has. Yes?
Should I step forward or do you speak?
You can please stand and say your --
My voice is only -- yeah. David Oxley, Pioneer Street. Just wanted to see where we stood on top of this, as you know, I brought this to Mr. Telepower's attention last year and also others about the docks with the Lake Side Hotel basically lining the one dock, a bulkhead with boats narrowing the main channel, it gets more dangerous to get in and out. And also for those of us who are kind of stuck in those stock spaces to back up, you know, boat is not like a car, you can't just stop at a dime and having large boats behind you. And like I had two large boats behind me. I called Mr. Telepower, I spoke to him last year. I spoke to him and I tried to speak to him this year, I called three times and he returned my call. I sent a letter to the board outlining my concerns, I hope you have that.
We have --
And I just wanted to know where we stood with that because I just was a little surprised that he didn't make the effort to contact me after he and I spoke about this multiple times.
Richard, can I?
Yeah, I think that was unnecessary to make that kind of comment here. That's a personal attack and that's not what these meetings are about.
Well, I'm sorry to feel that. I think I'm a physician and if I didn't return a call to one of my patients after they called me three times, that wouldn't be my patient.
Dr. Oxley.
And I think as long as I'm here, I think it's appropriate, I think it would have been very simple to make a return call.
Dr. Oxley, I do know that the village attorney, the difference between his being a patient of yours is he's not your attorney, he's the village board attorney, we direct.
Oh, that's why I came to that.
So he did contact you last year and you obviously noted that in your letter. He is following up on that. We are having to deal with two sort of conflicting surveys and the issue does involve litigation. So you might not get the speedy answer that you'd like, but we're very aware of your concerns.
Okay, that's all. I just wanted to, because I know I wasn't the only one last year. And even some of the people, Mr. Jones who owns a marina, said one of his boats, when somebody had purchased a brand new boat that was in the main channel and it outdrived by somebody coming in and out because it's a narrow thing and that damaged that boat. So this is a concern, my boat is in the main channel, I asked it to move and there are no spaces to look to. And I just thought this was an important thing. I just wanted to hear it. That's why I came to that since I hadn't heard anything as to what was going on.
Thank you, and your letter is in our board packet, we've all had the opportunity to read it.
Okay, any one last question? I'm busy. Do we have any idea when we might hear something about what the outcome or is this just an ongoing situation?
I think it's probably pretty ongoing.
Okay, very good. All right, well, I'm sorry, I wasn't, I just thought, as I said, I know he's not my attorney, but I just thought since it's a small town, we live here, I just thought some kind of correspondence. Especially when I asked the town clerk to let him know, then she said she was, but I still don't --
Which I did recognize, I did send my --
Yeah, that's all right. Well, thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Yes.
My name is Bruce Miller. Do you need my address?
Um, yes, she does for public comments. It doesn't matter.
Uh, Polly Creek, there you go.
That's perfect.
Okay. So I'm a new member of the Friends of the Park Committee. But I'm here tonight to maybe voice some concerns and also maybe try to find a solution looking forward to next year for the rink, that's in Badger Park.
For the ice skating rink?
For the ice skating rink, yeah. I know it's a unique situation, I was hoping we could come up with an unique solution. It is a pain to try to keep that ice clear. I know you guys have, this year and maybe last year, had one person designated as like the rink keepers.
Just as much as --
For the past two years, we have, you know, we had it in the budget prior year as well, the 4,000, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So, and it's just unfortunately Mother Nature doesn't work on an eight to 3:30 o'clock. And when we get snowstorms either on a Friday or during the day, if we don't clear that ice and get some water down that evening, the ice is at ruin for at least a good three or four days. I was just hoping we could come up with something whereby the Friends of the Park or some folks, I have three or four very solid volunteers who would be willing to help clear the rink, but it would involve a machine. Four or five years ago, we got trained. Was that, oh, that was Dwayne and I? Okay, okay. Maybe it was a little bit longer. We were told we can use the tractor. We used it a couple of times, that was there. And then we were told, nope, that wasn't something, I don't know whether that was --
Unfortunately, I'll just respond to that because I think those of us who were on the board at the time recollect that our insurance will not let volunteers operate machinery.
Correct.
That was the reason.
So what I'm wondering is, and this is going to be towards Mark, and I'm going to, you know, the reason I'm here today is to look forward to maybe we can get this solution for next winter. Is there any way that a volunteer and a good friend of the park through the indemnification of those volunteers to bring a snow blower in?
Again, I think we'd have to ascertain the high likelihood.
Right, and that's, I'm not expecting an answer tonight, I just wonder.
That's something you can totally --
Yeah, yeah, so I am already planning on calling the insurance just for a couple of things so I can add that if that is a --
Jenna, would you mind having our treasurer check on that? Yeah, our treasurer check because she deals largely with Mr. Hudson.
Okay.
I seem to recall, that's our insurance agent.
Okay.
I seem to recall that this avenue was explored in that same timeframe, which I think it went a little more than five years ago because it was simply --
To bring your own.
To bring your own equipment, and the answer was no, but I could be misremembering and it was a --
But you remember it correctly.
It was a long time ago, so it's worth asking again.
Okay.
But we will double check with our insurance to confirm that.
And if the answer is no, like why? Why, like when we built the boards, we came in with power tools. We were allowed to use power tools on the village property. Were we not supposed to do that? I don't know where this goes, where this stretch.
Yeah, I understand. Can I ask a clarified question? Do you keep statistics on the number of skating days that we get each winter?
We have not, as far as I know, for the village board.
I think this past winter, we had in the single digits of skating days.
And I know it's getting warmer, this year especially was very difficult for that, to do that. I also understand that there, okay, sorry.
Oh, I was just going to ask, obviously trustee Shin is the one who is in charge of the parks committee and I was reading your minutes, you know, that are in our packet. And it seemed like you were really looking at this and addressing it.
Yeah.
Were those recommendations conveyed, do you know, to the --
So I believe that Wilson, Bill and Ron are on a, have formed a rink committee, correct? So you --
Informed.
Informed, yeah. Okay.
Okay, I guess.
And so there are definitely things that we've talked about. One of those options being making the rink smaller and more and put into a shadier spot of Badger Park because I think one of the key issues is also the sun that's melting some of the ice. But we haven't addressed, or at least it hasn't been brought up, the continued maintenance. So it's more of rethinking what the rink is going to actually look like. And then what that maintenance looks like will come as a change.
So can I use you as a contract and go through you for the --
Mm-hmm, yes, actually, yes, yes.
The chair of the parks committee for the village?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Because I know it's difficult to maintain and we have volunteers. I've shuffled that entire rink, I've gone several times, it's not fun.
No, no, it's not. I think it is --
So if we could just figure out a way.
Yeah, I think it is worth asking again about whether or not volunteers are able to bring their own equipment and use that. Because I haven't heard anything about at that.
And I'm recollecting sort of what Cindy had mentioned, that simply be cut same way, you know, it is a --
What I remember further was that there is a question about the Friends of the Parks insurance and the Friends of the Parks looked into their insurance and they also said no, so.
All right.
I --
I bet that's what I remember, but as I said, it was your idea.
Yeah, it's worth looking into again.
I'll add, I'm an ex hockey player and I was very interested in that as exactly as the mayor and Cindy remembering.
That both insurance.
Can I add my two cents?
Can I, did both insurance, your recollection that both insurance companies said?
Insurance company said no.
But we will recheck it.
We asked it, it's five years ago, you can re-ask.
Yeah, we'll definitely recheck.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Bruce. I think Bill, if you want to speak, just let De, or De, Jenna know your name and address.
Bill Alston, I'm in town of Middlefield. Bill. The guy I was going to refer to just walking in the room.
Uh-oh.
Several years ago, I kind of get to Martin about, I can't remember what, but I asked him about insurance and maybe I should say this, but.
They have to use their own snow blower and why can't they use the village's snow blower? So that was the background.
I do think your advice in so many words was, don't ask the insurance company because no matter what you ask, they're going to say no. And if you don't ask, go ahead and do it.
Really? That was the legal advice our attorney gave?
Give me a point, because I know I was just in public.
Gee, I think I need to re, Cindy reappoint.
Yeah, I think, I think it's reasonable. Operating a snow blower, I don't know if anybody in this room has ever heard of somebody being hurt operating a snow blower. I have not.
I have.
Okay.
Yeah, clearing the veil, yeah.
I'd take care, I'd take care of 33 open fractures in the neurologist.
But if you're just operating it, I mean, you can get hurt with anything if you try it or not. But just operating a snow blower is sick. And there's no reason that anybody should worry about it.
You'd be surprised how idiotic people can be.
Well, okay.
As I said, as a trauma surgeon, I've seen snowblower injuries.
Why don't you screen us for idiots?
There's no hesitation to that.
I think, Bill, I think this was a particularly frustrating season for ice making as Sidney alluded to. There were single digits, it was impossible. About the time you got it cleared and tried to put some water down, you would suddenly experience 50 degree weather. So.
Let me speak to that. We set up the rink early in December. They didn't flood it, I think, for almost two weeks. That's two weeks that the water coming out of the ground at 50 degrees could have been cooling so that when it gets cold, it's more, it's more ready to freeze. Then they, this is according to one of the village crew, they overfilled the rink because they didn't realize that we had a new liner, although why they didn't, I don't know because you and Mitch and I had a meeting that we were going to have a new liner. So Mitch knew that. But they overfilled it and then they walked away. I mean, if I overfill something and I realize it's overfilled, I drain it, I pull the plug in the sink. They didn't do that, they just left it. So the village has to step up and takes the responsibility and somebody has to advocate and make sure people are doing their job. I skated on a pond, I think it was December 15th or 16th this year. So the rink won't freeze as fast as the pond realized. But still, it could have frozen a lot earlier than it did. And with proper maintenance, it would still be okay for most of the season. The only reason I stopped skating was because we had snow and I wasn't going to shovel it back. But, you know, there was ice for most of the season. But you had to get the jump on it so that when the cold weather does come, it freezes.
Sidney.
I just, yeah, I just had a point of clarification that, so we've had it in the budget for maintenance of the rink for a few years, but this past year was the first year that we hired a seasonal laborer whose initial --
We hired a laborer who was either at the rink or if it was a 50 degree day and nothing happened, they would shift. So what we did was we added more hours, so streets paid half the salary in parks. But his main purpose was the parks.
So, and then, but this was the first year that we have that, right?
That we expanded the position, but we have had the 4,000, the money in there for the parks and did hire someone in the past, but it wasn't --
Well, last year, last year, because you gave me, when I approached the town of Middlefield to get funding from the parks, you gave me the breakdown. And last year, the seasonal employee, I think, quit after one day and his salary was $18 or something like this. So.
Yeah, he worked like one hour.
Yes, so, so now we know how, you know, with the new liner and with potential issues that we've faced this past season and if we're planning on hiring or at least extending that seasonal labor position to have someone maintaining the rink, because it's sort of their first, you know, bullet point of job description, then maybe we can work closely with you to sort of let that person know what they might expect and what they can, or mitigate something.
Or, or some of the people on the village crew have been involved for a while. I don't think there's a person that the kids should know what's going on. But yeah, I mean, yeah, there's a compromise.
Okay, I do think it's worth noting that O'Neanta never got its rink opened this past year.
In fact, we got some phone calls.
Yeah.
How did you get your rink open? And we did, because nobody, Richfield, nobody was getting their rink opened.
No, I understand that. I'm always saying it's due. But you have to make a priority for somebody to do it. They have to be responsible and do it well.
But we're willing to help, we want to help as much as we can that person as well. Unfortunately, a big part of that is clearing the other time.
And you know, you may think this is new, but Sidney, when I was sitting in that chair 11 years ago, we organized Think Rink, and so it was Friends of Parks and we focused just on Think Rink. And we began those meetings in the fall in hopes that we would be able to have a season. So it just keeps everybody in the loop, so you might want to think about reactivating Think Rink.
Writing it down.
It's a great little thing there. Thank you so much.
If you have an employee too, they can use a snow blower, you can get that insured.
100%.
There was the volunteer issue, so if there's somebody, that's where the individual should be using the snow blower.
We understand, yeah. This one, this one, it needs to happen off of the eight to 3:30 time.
All right. Is there any other public comment? We have a busy meeting. Is there any other public comment?
I'm here for your 7 o'clock hearing on Fenimore Lane.
Right, and this is just public comment. In addition to that, I will open that public hearing at 7 o'clock.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we all had correspondence in our packet. We had the Chris Brady email pertaining to the declaration of our snow emergency on March 14. I'm sure some of you have spoken to him in person. I also did respond via email, which I think I CC'd to everyone. So there was a response to that one.
Yes, I have a question about that. Can you describe what role the village plays in declaring an emergency? Do we take a cue or do we make our own judgment?
When New York State does and then when Atsico County declares a state of emergency, we often tag team that because we can't be obviously open if Atsico County's declared, you know, vehicles shouldn't be on the road.
Right, so what I didn't get from this clearly was who went first in declaring?
Did you see my reply?
It is a few weeks ago, but I don't remember.
So I noted that early in the morning, the governor had made an announcement about a potential snow emergency and then their services did declare it. So the state went first, then the county, and then the village.
And what discretion does each level of government have?
They use the reporting of the National Weather Service and the safety of our --
Right, but I'm trying to get into Chris's question was when boots on the ground, whatever the weather service says, there's a localized effect or non-effect. And how much do we choose to cut it closer than far away? I mean, what are our, we just do it automatically? We don't use any independent judgment? Once the emergency's announced, we don't use any independent judgment, say, well, actually here it's not happening. It's happening quickly.
Yeah, please.
So I can say, I think first, because I did speak to Chris, I think there was a bit of a misunderstanding in that in the past, and still in O'Neanta, a snow emergency is triggered when there's a certain amount of snow on the road. So that still happens in O'Neanta, you get to two and a half inches, there is an automatic snow emergency. The village formally had that policy as well, two inches, no emergency. And given the fact that it snows quite a bit, quite often, that often meant during the course of the day, the parking was suddenly prohibited because we had gotten to that two inches. So we switched gears and moved to the system where a snow emergency is declared, much like it is in Utica or Rome or in the county, which is what happened in this case. And I think some of Chris's wording is, refers to the fact that he thought that it was still triggered by a number of inches, which it hasn't been, I'm going to guess in like maybe eight years.
And my reply indicated that as well, that, you know, sometimes we call it a quote "snow emergency" because ice, icing sleeve and other things.
Thanks.
So the other, so that was that email and it sounds like we were all able to follow up with Chris. We had an email from David Oxley and your ears should have been burning, but.
I defended you.
And the other one is from, which was, we just received tonight. It wasn't in the original packet, it was in the envelope, from Andrew Armstrong relative to there being a diving ward at Ferry Spring Park, which is, it causes noise pollution, et cetera, when other people are using it. I'm going to refer that one to your committee. Aren't you lucky, Sidney? You're getting all the fun ones tonight.
Um, right.
All right.
Yeah, that will go on the agenda for the Parks Board.
And as I said, I'll open the public hearing for the Ammenasoff intersection on Fenimore Lane East at Chestnut Street at 7 o'clock. In the meanwhile, in our packet, we had draft minutes for March 22nd, March 27th, and our April 3rd organizational meeting. I know Sidney and I kind of compiled one email and sent that out with any corrections. Did anyone have any that aren't already submitted? Richard?
Yeah, on the March 22nd meeting, members in attendance, members absent, I do not figure on any of that. I was here, I was there at the meeting at the school. On the March 27th meeting, and I don't know if you looked at this, Sidney, the last line on the paragraph that begins with page three, it gives Dr. Fox, "Discussion was held on the cameras not being livestreamed or routinely monitored, but would be recorded for use later on if needed such an extreme situation." That doesn't actually make any sense.
No, I think it should say.
I'll look, it should say, recorded for later use and if needed, monitored such as an extreme situation. Grammar has to be corrected. The other thing is, my statement at the bottom of the same page, where I said I was not aware that the board would be making statements on the policy. I said I was not aware that individual members of the board are not making statements. And that's about it. Thank you.
Can you just email me those?
Sure, absolutely.
All right, so with those corrections, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 22nd, March 27th and April 3rd meetings? By George, second by Sidney, all in favor?
Aye.
Why don't we tackle a few of these permits? We have, I think, a total of six permits tonight. Let's begin with application to use village property, the streets, Doug McCoy, Clark Sports Center for Race the Lake Marathon on Saturday, June 3rd from 8 to 11.
I'll make a motion to approve the portion of the Race the Lake Marathon for Saturday, June 3rd that is in the village, will that form?
Motion made by Sidney, second by Anna, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we have an application to use Ferry Spring Park for our 4th of July fireworks, which will be on Saturday, July 1st, with a rain date of July 8.
I make a motion to approve the application to use Ferry Spring Park for the recommendation that the park remain open for swimming until its normal closing time.
Yeah, did you put in here 1 P.M.?
You did, yeah.
That's usually set up. I mean, I think that's what they do every year. It doesn't interfere with the park being open.
Okay, they're just starting set up at 1.
On purposes, so.
Yeah, and they're on that other kind of road anyway. All right, so there's the motion, second by Sidney, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we have an application to use village property, village streets, for the Special Olympics, Atsico County torch run.
Yeah, on the March 22nd meeting, uh, members in attendance, members absent, I do not figure on any of that. I was here, I was there at the meeting at the school. On the March 27th meeting, and I don't know if you looked at this, Sydney, uh, the last line on the paragraph that begins with page three, that begins Dr. Fogg. Uh, discussion was held on the cameras not being live streamed or routinely monitored, but would be recorded for use later on if needed such an extreme situation. That doesn't actually make any sense.
No, I, I think it should say.
I look, I, it should say recorded for later use and if needed monitored, such as an extreme situation.
Yep.
Grammar has to be corrected.
Yep.
The other thing is, uh, my statement at the bottom of the same page, uh, where I said I was not aware that the board would be making statements on the policy. I said, I was not aware that individual members of the board would not be making statements. And that's about it. Thank you.
Can you just email me those?
Sure, absolutely.
All right. So with those corrections, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 22nd, March 27th, and April 3rd meetings? By George, second by Sydney. All in favor?
Aye.
Why don't we tackle a few of these permits? We have, I think, a total of six permits tonight. Let's begin with application to use village property, um, the streets, Doug McCoy, Clark Sports Center for Race, the Lake Marathon on Saturday, June 3rd, from 8 to 11.
I'll make a motion to approve the portion of the race, the Lake Marathon for Saturday, June 3rd. That is in the village. Will that form?
Motion made by Sydney, second by Anna. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And then we have an application to use Ferry Spring Park for our 4th of July fireworks, which will be on Saturday, July 1st, uh, with a rain date of July 8.
I make a motion to approve the application to use Ferry Spring Park. We, the recommendation that the park remain open for swimming until it's normal closing time.
Yeah, did you put in here 1 P.M.?
You did, yeah.
That's usually set up. I mean, I think that's what they do every year. It doesn't interfere with the park being open.
Okay, they're just starting set up at 1. Yeah. And they're on that other kind of road anyway. All right. So there's the motion, second by Sydney. All in favor?
Aye.
And sorry, and then we have an application to use village property, village streets, for the Special Olympics, Atsico County Torch Run, Sunday, August 13th, 10 to 11. Is there a motion to approve the use of the village streets, um, for that? Second by Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have, um, number four and five of our permits. Um, we have the ABT Alliance, the fishing tournament, the boat launch on April 16th. So that one already obviously occurred at April 30th and 5:21.
I have a question about this one. With the bass tournaments, and I sent this to, uh, a part earlier, Jenna, it says 20 to 30 people. Is it, are we talking about boats, numbers of boats? This is, so it'll be 20 to 30 boats.
I would not say so, having in the, uh, most of the bass fishermen that I see.
But, yeah, no, I, I, I get that, but that, it wasn't clear to me.
Oh, I see.
That would be like 10 boats. It seems like an awful small, um, boat, between.
10 to 15 boats?
I think there's usually a lot.
Yeah.
A lot.
And there's usually about 15 to 20 for the bass tournament.
Boats.
Boats, yeah.
Yeah, I think that he's saying 10 to 15. Cause there's usually two, it says people, isn't it?
Right, right.
And I've always noticed two people in the bass boats. Do you have any of them by your boat, Martin?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I called, I think I spoke to Jenna. I don't remember for sure who I spoke to. And
That's correct.
And, and this is, they're not actually using that space. They're just launching boats. They don't even really need a permit for this, do they?
They, they take them all the way to the end.
Whoa.
Yeah.
And they come to fish.
And it's, it's when they come back and they're doing that.
Well, but that's not the, that's not the, that's not the, um,
That's the, yeah, they set up tables.
Yeah, it's 5 a.m. to 3, you know, they're doing all the fishing early in the morning.
Okay, but they're asking, okay, well, I'm misinterpreting or they're filling it out wrong. They're saying village boat launch. The village boat launch is that area that goes from the roadway down to the water. The other thing is, uh, you could say, uh, Fish Lane, parking area, whatever. But the village boat launch is literally the village boat launch.
They're actually boat, boat launch. It was once a street. And if you think about it, where did we install the boat launch station?
All right, you're right.
It's on Fish Road. That, that is a, a fish boat launch. Um, as, I would be a little more concerned about this if it were in the height of our, uh, paint parking or busier season. I am fine with, uh, the ABT Alliance and their three dates. As I say, once it already occurred, I think I took a walk down to the park and never saw anything. So I don't think it was all that busy. Um, again, April 30th and 5:21. I did, do think though, and we are starting our, we will have our boat steward in place. In fact, that's in here. So we do require our boat steward to come in by 5 o'clock in the morning to be inspecting those boats, because it's these bass tournament boats in particular that go from waters to waters and might more likely, um, be carrying invasive species. So at some point, and I think it's a little late now, we need to be thinking about our fee structure. Because we're paying overtime, et cetera, for an employee, you know, extra hours to come in and cover this. And we're going to try and see if we can get the crisp stewards as well to cover these tournaments. So it's really important to be thinking about that. And, uh, that might be a fee structure we need to be setting a fee on. So is there a motion for the ABT Alliance, um, with those three dates, one having already occurred?
I'll make that motion.
By Cindy, second by Sydney. All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second, uh, bass tournament, this is the one we usually see, the Susquehanna Bass Association. And, uh,
So this one I'm more concerned about.
Because of the one day.
Particularly the June 18th date.
Yeah.
So that's during the paint parking season. It's a Saturday. I know it's a Sunday. But it's during the sort of the height of our summer season, schools just about to get out. It is likely, if it's nice, to be a very busy day. And 40 people, which at least is 20 boats.
Right.
Basically uses all of the parking on Fish Road.
Right.
And so are we going to institute, what we were talking about instituting?
Can't do it, can't do that now, but.
Can't do it that fast at, at a public hearing. But I don't know if we can issue this with the stipulation that they, they need to park in a satellite lot. But the problem is that at 6 a.m., there's no, there's no trolley to bring people back. But the trailer parking is more.
Right, I have, because there are so often two people, and what I have witnessed, um, I've made notes, and sure Mitch knows, um, to have our boat steward and the crisp stewards in place if possible. So we mentioned that for the other Jenna. We'll make that part of this one too. And that, um, the applicant needs to know, confirm and ensure that all participants in the, uh, let me read this, in the tournament are aware that trailer parking is illegal on village streets and may be limited at Fish Road Parking Lot. They are free to park their vehicle and their trailer at Ferry Spring and be picked up there. And I do think if we want to try and limit, you were posing like six spaces for trailers?
Six to eight, yeah.
Six to eight spaces. We could sort of move that and still set a public hearing for our May meeting, and it would still be in effect. And that might be the path we want to take. So we'll make sure we do that before we leave to them. All right. Given all that, is there a motion to approve the Susquehanna Bass Association's tournaments? No one, um, Joe, is there a second? This is interesting that you'd be willing to do it for one and not the other when we think we're going to have the trailer trolley second.
Well, the numbers are different and times different.
And the other tour in October. I mean, this is, this is, this is.
The October is last year when there was a to-do about it.
Yeah, this tournament has been happening for years, for years.
If we had a second, we could have a discussion.
There was a second, Joe. So we're discussing.
I did.
So, okay.
I'm just trying to understand whether we can make a stipulation about what you said. I had thoughts. They park over, we have a, a, a grade, a road level lot that they could park trailers over by Ferry Spring like that.
And then they would walk down. Yeah, so that's why that stipulation was there.
And then a dock, and a dock will be up by then. At least a little boat dock.
That I'm not 100% sure of. Uh, we could check with Mitch or try and have that in.
But it's clear to me you can make a condition.
Yeah, yeah.
Then I would.
You said it's clear to you or not clear to you?
Clear.
It's clear.
So we keep all the boats off the, I'm sorry, I just want to finish my point. So all the trailers and vehicles off Fish Road.
Well, if we have a public hearing next month and establish whatever the parks committee is going to recommend here, six or eight trailer spaces, once those are filled, they will have no option but to go park. They will be alerted to the fact that parking trailers is illegal on village streets. And so they, that is the option they would have to be picked up there.
Yeah, my thought is different than that. My thought is if we can condition, this is a bass tournament. It's a big, big in the boa constrictor. If it can have the condition for these tournaments that this is what we're going to do as a condition to a permit, we don't have that here. We just, we, here's where you're parking. Here's a map. I'll you park.
Yeah.
We want to have a dock in place, a pedestrian dock to, you know, a little dock at the end that we.
Vic says yes.
Right. That's what I was suggesting. They, there will be room for six to eight, whatever we decide next month. And that Vic needs to confirm and ensure all participants in the tournament understand that trailer parking is limited on Fish Road and they may, and is forbidden on, uh, village streets. And they will have to park at Ferry Spring and be picked up there.
Right. I'm, I'm not making myself clear.
Oh, I'm sorry, then.
There would be no, we have many others who would be coming to use the park that day. So my idea is that none of the tournament boats will be there. And then we will have our spaces available. That's how we're going to condition the permit. Because if what Cindy says is true, that's our experience, I just, and, and they, it's pretty tumultuous. It's going to be all at once coming in, all at once leaving. I just recommend we do what the, what we can.
And we could make that stipulation, no trailer parking on the June 18th date. Because there are, you know, no one noticed it last week.
Right, I understand.
And no one noticed it in October last year, or will notice it this October. All right. So is, do you want to, who made the motion?
I have another point for discussion, so.
Go ahead.
We have time to talk to Vic and confirm that he'll be able to monitor his people, that they will follow the instructions. We are, we have, we have some problems of getting, um, getting things, you know, God, what is the word for it? Getting the people to comply with our instructions and our conditions. And then all it takes is one person saying, I don't give a damn, and barks and blocks the street, and somebody else follows. I think we need to speak to this gentleman and make sure that he understands all these stipulations. We still have another meeting before this, which to pass it. I don't think there's a rush. Certainly no rush from the October event. But I, 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 I am concerned that this is going to create a problem with adding 20 more boats. We know we're busy enough already. We don't have the resources for handling it. And we don't have the resources for putting in the whole monitor to make sure everybody plays nice. So I think we need to speak to him before we approve this application.
That is essentially why the boat steward though would be in, in this case, at 5:30 a.m. to inspect those boats. And we would all, we have, we'll have probably a part-time PEO and our full-time PEO. And they would be alerted to also be ticketing this, because it is a ticketable offense.
Right. And, and, and my last point, while you're, if, if.
Let me, let me answer that. I think that we have to absolutely make sure that he understands that we will be ticketing. Not possibly, we will be.
Right. If we have an even more severe sanction, if the people aren't complying, we'll communicate fully. Then they apply next year and there's no permit.
I will say, you, we just approved, um, the ABT. The Susquehanna Bass Alliance is the one that's probably been coming here for decades. So you've now, um, zeroed in on one. I think with those parameters that we stipulated, Jenna, and I could share my scribbles here with you later if you'd like. There was a motion and a second.
Have they historically gotten this during the season? Are you telling me?
They usually do three tournaments. I was surprised that there were only two. They usually do one like in April, so they did not. They do one in like June, and that's always the trouble one.
That is the trouble one.
Because we've got, you know, boats docks and people are much busier than, the October is never concerned. So it's really the June one we're focused on. All right. So there was a motion and a second, and we have outlined all our stipulations, all those in favor of, um, allowing the Susquehanna Bass Association, um, to use the boat launch for 6:18 and 10:21 and 22. Say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Bear with me. We have one more permit, and then I'm going to open the public hearing. This is an easy one. This is, was dropped off tonight. Um, this is for the Upper Pioneer Street, not the lower Pioneer Street. Block party.
Not built yet.
And, and it has been scheduled, I did note that they've scheduled their block party the same day as the Cooper's, as the run, as the Cooperstown.
Yard sale, right?
Uh, Chamber of Commerce Yard Sale Day, when there tend to be vehicles, some people moving around for that. But as long as they're aware of that and, uh, as they close off the street.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, is there a motion to approve the, um, Upper Pioneer Street block party, um, with the street being closed, um, between 4 and 10 P.M.?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by George, second by Cindy. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
New York City, let us open that for you because we're.
All right. At this point, I'm going to open the public hearing on proposed local law number one of 2023. amend chapter 270 dash 6 dash, dash 6, that's it, vehicle and traffic regulations by adding a stop sign, stop intersection on Fenimore Lane East at Chestnut Street. Is there anyone who would like to speak to that? Tricia?
I'm passionate about the Chestnut, which uses the entryway of Fenimore Lane to get into the parking lot, which goes all the way through the time. Now, I totally support the idea that there be a stop sign, but it's not clear where it's going to be. And unlike some roads, there's a sidewalk that goes right through there. And so what, and the road, Fenimore Lane is very narrow. So those of us who are using the building, we can go out the back way to Pine, but then we got to circle around because of the one-way. You don't have Fenimore as a one-way street, so there's people that are coming in and out. And it's not clear where you're going to put the stop sign. So that's why I came to actually, to find out a little bit more information. Uh, because that wasn't in the notice.
Yes. So it's my understanding that based on New York State code, the stop sign has to be, uh, on the inside of the sidewalk.
Before it, basically.
Okay, before the sidewalk, okay.
There is a big tree there.
Yeah.
So it would be on the, um, if you were on Chestnut Street, the far side of the tree. Mitch says it has to be placed four feet behind the sidewalk, so that cars stop before they get to the sidewalk.
Well, that's, I'm totally fine that we're not running people over as we're coming out that way.
I think to, to your point, that also means that you stop, that someone turning in presumably would see the car stopped there and hopefully would let them out before turning in.
And that's, that is my point, that that road is really not wide enough to accommodate two-way traffic. And especially in winter time, it is not, because lots of us walk. And in summertime, lots of us bike ride. And, you know, it's just a very narrow lane. And the tendency is to want to go out that way, because the other one makes you loop around if you're headed in the right direction you're headed in. But I totally support the stop sign, because I've seen people not, and I want people to.
Thank you, Pat.
Actually, I have questions for Cindy. One, would we also have stop signs on, uh, Chestnut?
No.
No, so it'll just be, it'll just be on Fenimore Lane?
Correct.
The other question is, and I swear, I remember that when we were presented with the project, they talked about entering from Chestnut and not exiting from Chestnut. They were going to only enter, and you're going to have to exit on, uh, on Pine.
And that, that could very well be true for people who live in the apartment complex, over whom the applicant has some control. But that, that lane gets used by a variety of users who actually don't have the legal authority to go out on Pine, because that's kind of.
This could buy a property, okay.
Let me ask one last, for safety purposes, would it make a difference to put the stop stripe farther back so that people turning off of Chestnut can make the turn without bumping into a car?
Yeah, I mean, four feet behind the sidewalk would be pretty far back.
The sign has to be four feet.
Yeah.
I'm, I just don't know what the turning radiuses are, but.
Yeah. I, I don't think that we would paint a stop, we don't usually paint stop bars except on incredibly busy streets, which I would think Fenimore Lane wouldn't.
Well, I, I do know that where there are some situations, you put a stop line just so that people know where to stop because of traffic, if that's a consideration for.
I don't know that our street crew is looking to paint more stop bars if they can avoid it. If you've seen the crosswalks, they need to be painted right now.
We've had a problem with this before, but state laws specifically states that there's not a line drawn. It's, it's parallel, it's perpendicular to the stop sign.
All right. Was there any other comments?
I will, I will say that neighbors in my building who have not come tonight, because I encourage people to come, um, said, oh, I want to be able to go out that way. Now, I'd be perfectly happy to go out the back way if that became one-way in.
It can't be, though.
But apparently it can't be.
No.
Yeah.
Which is too bad, because if you're coming from Chestnut and trying to, and there's cars parked from what used to be the Cooper Inn. And there, so there's one, you swing all the way over this way, try and make the turn, and there's the trees, and there's all the other stuff to make, to get into Fenimore Lane. And if you're coming from the other direction, you gotta swing out to get in. So it's a very unsafe little lane, especially if there's a car sitting there with a stop sign.
You know, there's, there's semi-solution to this. I, I've been corrected, we can't stop it from being a two-way street. But landlords, certainly nothing blocks them on the private property side of putting up a sign saying, do not exit this way, you know? So throw it on them to help control it. Apartment house, of which people complained when we approved the apartment house, that would all be going out the back. Now, you can't, we can't enforce it, we can't put up any tickets, but there's nothing that stops the landlords from putting up a sign that says, do not exit.
It's interesting, because they told me that they do not own the lot behind the parking lot that they got. And so do they own the exit lane but not the lot that goes across?
They, they own both.
They, okay, because they insisted to me that they don't own that, okay.
The LLC might not.
Well, I mean, that's a private.
The LLC might not.
I think they're correct in what they're talking about.
The same individuals are the owners, but they may own it under a different ownership structure.
Ah, it might not be Z A B D.
Correct.
Okay.
But again, there's nothing that stops an owner from on private property in their parking lot and their driveway, putting up a sign that says, do not exit. It has no legal authority, but it may, it may help to solve the problem.
Possibly, but remember, the inn, Cooperstown also uses the exits on both sides of their building, because they've got that parking lot behind their building.
I'm just saying, wherever, wherever the private property or the apartment house begins, wherever it happens to be, a sign there may help.
This is for a discussion.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, um.
Aye.
You feel, all right, we will probably vote on this if you wanna wait just a few minutes. I don't, does anyone else wanna speak about this particular public hearing? If not, I am closing the public hearing. Is there any further, hopefully no, just more discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the, move to approve the.
Installation of the stop.
Installation of the stop sign, yes, thank you.
On the east end of Fenimore Lane. Seconded by Hannah, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In your package, you have our CEO report. There was no Sony Board of Appeals meeting in April. Essentially, there was nothing on the agenda, so it was canceled. There was quite a full schedule for HPARV, and Planning Board had one action item. We received email to you, the Planning Board and HPARV minutes, which hopefully you had a chance to review. Is there a motion to accept the CEO report? By Cindy, seconded by George, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to Police Committee, Public Safety. You, you're free to say, you know, anything additional, or we also have the, it's no need to recap anything unless anybody has any questions?
Nothing, nothing really extraordinary. I had an opportunity to sit with the chief and his staff, who were officers, and they were in there and all of that. They were pretty good at handling, they had a couple of issues that I think might give concern to the public hearing. Primarily one is staff. There are a whole, you know, a whole list in the schedule where there's actually nobody, nobody assigned to work. So that's it. Again, there's some training issues that he'd like to follow up on, radar training, field training and the like, so, but all in all, it seems like it didn't do a good job for us.
Is there any questions from Alvin Richard?
Move to accept the.
Oh, wait.
Oh, sorry.
There is a, two things caught my eye. One was that we're, what are you recruiting grants for the stationary cameras? So the installation of them is not given?
I'm sorry.
The bottom of page. The bottom of the first page. The first, the first page, very bottom?
Fixed cameras, fixed cameras up on page three.
With hundred grants at the bottom of the page. So that coupled with the vendor coming here, when is it, this fourth? The 26th, I believe, right?
Yes, the table's on.
Oh, this, this, this Wednesday, yeah.
Frank was hoping to get quotes before this meeting, and he was unable to do that, so. He was unable to get quotes from the companies as he had hoped. He stopped in before I.
Oh, so that gender rating won't with her?
No, it's still gonna occur, but he was hoping to get quotes before this meeting, so he had an idea of exactly the cost. And he was not able to do that.
I didn't see the time, or maybe I missed it.
I do not know the time, on April 26th.
As well, if you can plug it out, thanks.
So something to note that Frank, I'm sorry, I was just like looking at the budget so closely. Frank mentioned in the meeting that he had, he believes that he had budgeted for the cameras under that equipment line, and then he, there was that added fixed. Sorry.
It sounds like it's budgeted twice, yes.
I think it's budgeted twice, but it ends up covering the amount that he had suggested, that 10 to 12,000. So I, I think that there's no, there's no need to re, to, to adjust that. It's that.
He will be purchasing before June 1st?
No, it's for the new, it's for the new budget.
It's for the new budget.
In the new budget, oh, okay.
Yeah, so, so in A 312200 Police Equipment, we have 15,000 tentatively budgeted. 35 and change of that is for cargo storage and new uniform equipment. And then 5,295 is for the fixed camera system. But then we have the rest of that budget, which I think was also, that, that was meant to, to go towards those cameras. I think that line where he said fixed camera system might be referring possibly to the installation.
Yeah, okay, I've got the budget here, I'm trying to track both those numbers, so.
So, oh my gosh, sorry, my phone keeps.
It's on page nine, so.
Yep, yep, and so it's that first line item there, under Police Equipment. And I'm look, I'm looking at the budget that Jenna had sent around just recently.
Right, so that's what we talked about last time.
Right, so. My phone, it's not. Turning crap.
Do, do you need to try and see it better? It's ready.
Thank you, every time I look closely, flips on my phone. Okay, so on 312200, the tentative budget is 15,000 total, right? So all the way over to 2324. We, or Frank set aside 3596 of that for vests, plates, new uniform equipment, cargo storage. And then he wrote 5295 for fixed camera system. But the rest of that equipment budget, the 15,000, so that'll be about six.
11,000, so.
Yeah, so, so the rest of that was also thought to be put towards the camera. So we wouldn't be adding anymore to the, to the, to the police budget for the cameras.
What, what, vests and plates and the uniform equipment are not itemized, so.
I believe that's all one, so those, the vests and plates, new uniform equipment, cargo storage unit. I think that's all one.
Is all 3,596 together.
Okay.
There's also one other thing that I wanted to point out, because I think a while ago.
Oh, before you, before you leave that, so.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
The fact that we're gonna be getting some actual numbers from vendors will bear around these numbers. Which is why Frank's maybe reporting that he's gonna recruit grants.
I didn't see the grants, but maybe.
No, it's on the Police Committee meeting. At the bottom of page one. Public Safety.
You might have had, I know you left it. Didn't you ever there?
No, I was here. Do you remember telling that, Grant, for those cameras? I, I'm just not seeing it on, I'm looking at the bottom of page one.
See where it said, it says grants chief cavalry speaker here.
Oh, 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 okay, I see. Um, so I think, I, I'm not sure why that was brought up. I don't remember what that conversation was. But I do know that I brought up the question, because when, during the public hearing, Frank, someone had asked about the price, and Frank had said between 10 and 12,000. And then you had pointed to the budget and said, we only have 5200 set aside for this. But when we brought it up to Frank, he had clarified that he was hoping to use the rest of that equipment budget, and that it shouldn't, unless we had made changes, which we didn't. It should not, unless, unless somehow the quotes become astronomically more than what he's anticipating.
I just think we should get a bill particulars for this, working for all these different levels.
Yeah, and, and I believe Frank is, that's his plan, he just couldn't get anyone here.
To give an actual quote.
To give a quote, because they have to look at the, they have to look at the area and, and suggest that.
Okay.
Okay, um, the other thing that I wanted to bring up, um, there's, at the, at the end of the Police, or yeah, Police Committee minutes, there's a list of parking violations and the, the tickets, or the, you know, the fine associated with each one. Because I believe someone had brought that up, having all of the.
Did you want to know all of them?
Um, so, one point of clarification, I did not realize that Jenna had given me the only copy of it, so I wrote all over it, because, because that's what I was just thinking, but.
That's what I was gonna ask, would did, are they entered in the system wrong and someone was correcting that?
No, that's just, this is, you're, you're looking at my inner mind network, that I did not realize.
We didn't recognize your writing.
Yeah, yeah, um, so, I mean, but, I, I will say that those ones that I crossed out, I thought were the ones that we might wanna give a little bit more thought to. The fire hydrant parking, right, $35 is not, it's not a, it's not a high fine for parking by a fire hydrant. Uh, blocking a driveway.
Is it just the driveway one?
Yeah, so blocking the driveway was 35, and then.
I thought we talked about significantly higher fines for blocking.
Yeah.
You know, I think where you're recollecting is blocking the fire department driveway, we did. Is that what you called it?
Well, I was, I did talk about.
Yes, we did do that one.
Did we, did we shift that? Because I thought we never had a specific blocking the fire. I thought it was just blocking the driveway. I thought when we went through the law, we, we.
And I think, I keep putting it off, because I keep saying I wanna see the whole list, which we now have.
Correct, we don't need any action.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, so, so that's, this is why this is in here, so we can all look at it, um.
But right now, for instance, trailer vehicle over, um.
20 feet is just the 35 dollar.
35, okay, so we should make sure this is 35.
Yes, I, again, I'm so sorry.
Okay, no, no, no.
Yeah, all of them.
I, I was a little confused.
So all of them are 35, except for parking in a handicapped spot, which is not 100.
I, I think parking in, blocking the access to the firehouse or blocking front of a hydrant should certainly be equivalent to that.
I, I totally agree. I don't think that there's a separate violation between blocking a driveway and blocking the fire driveway.
I think there's, there's no violation about blocking emergency vehicles.
No, but there's a no parking, stopping, or standing. And if we, we made sure that that's what our law read for the fire department driveway, then no parking, stopping, or standing would apply there.
Would be applicable, yeah.
How much is that right now?
It's 35 right now.
Cindy, I guess you're interested in this a lot.
To add, to the discussion, I noticed on number 19, we have a fine for angled parking more than 12 inches from the curb. How about these big old vehicles that overhang the sidewalk on angled parking that might impair pedestrian way? I know we have a little verge there for.
Yeah, we designed it to account for that.
So we're happy to have that overhang, okay?
So, not happy, but, but it happens.
We're not gonna fight.
It's some very long vehicle.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, just because there's so many to look through, and I'm wondering if this is another joint police streets sort of mini committee to think about and refer the best change. We maybe do it all at once, so that we're not constantly coming back to each.
I agree, that, those are the parties to be involved in that, all right?
Is there a way, I'm thinking now, with this camera policy and this potential for installation of other cameras, we have the statistics for the month here, but without getting to a specific address, is there a way to plot or to record these roughly where they happen? Because we have a concentration of them. Of incidents in certain areas, that helps inform us. Now, I suppose you can always backtrack when somebody decides there's an issue or they wanna think about installing a camera, but this is, there may be more detail behind these monthly statistics.
There is, I think you're getting the summary of what the infraction was.
And I, so I was gonna say, I believe now when they're entered in the system, and you will probably know better, that, that it is much easier to search that and the like than when it was all kept by hand, which you know, you're like.
So you can, so we're, okay, so it can be searched.
Well, that's coming.
Except that now. I, I, I would assume, just judging by the way that technology should be working in that end, but. And I, and we did get a list before that public hearing of the number of calls. I think there was a little bit of confusion on what exactly the breadth of those incidents were in those specific areas, but, um. Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't know, we can, I think we can talk to Frank and see what that would look like.
All right, why don't you follow up on that, and plans according to? All right, with, and, Wesley.
Bring up one more thing, I'm sorry, one more thing. Um, he asked for another license, is that in my minutes? I believe it is, um, for the body worn cameras.
Yeah.
They realize they do need another pro license, so that Frank can access, um, the software. And he can agree this late tonight, wanna pass it around quick. It's a five-year period, it's, it's a big copies, if you want, just pass it along. So it's 2,366,01 for a period of 56 months to have the pro license. So he's able to do what he needs to do, whatever the body cam footage.
What was the amount?
2,000.
2,366.
Wow, what a lot. Where we thought it was.
Wait a minute.
See, I, I think it's 500 dollars per month for.
Ah.
What this says, that's.
Yeah, see, I'm confused what he said and what he's handed me, so this says.
I think maybe he was just, he thought it was less than, than it is.
Possibly, so he literally handed me this to me.
Where, where, we go months, we go years.
Um, page two.
Right here, on page two.
That's where we're at now, and then it's cheaper.
I, I think that was just, um.
A total of 500 dollars for a four-year license.
This looks like it's once a year for 500 dollars. So it's 500 dollars once a year for 56.
And you have to go four years.
Correct.
So that's the 2,000.
This year is 332 dollars and eight cents. Uh, January 2024 will be 478, then it's 498, 518, 538, so it's around 500 dollars.
So this is a proprietary, it's of the vendors?
Yeah, it acts on the body camera vendors.
So, so essentially, we have two pro licenses right now, which allows the, the holder of that license to look through the body worn camera footage. And I believe James has one of those, and then Jess has the other, Jess has the evidence tech. And Frank was just noting an issue where James was on a training, um, he was out for training, and Jess was out, because his wife just had twins, and, and there was no one to operate the pro licenses. And should someone need to look into the footage, he would not have been able to do so until one of them was back.
Well, yeah, but I mean, these licenses aren't ours, they're individuals. How can that be?
They, you stuff them up so that they are. You stuff them up so that they are geared toward a particular person because you wouldn't want.
Everyone to be able to look through all of the footage.
Yeah.
No, but we would like our police chief or somebody to, I.
Right, so, so.
Why isn't the chief the one of the pro?
I believe it's because he, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the decision making was behind that, but I think because James is the, James is like operating title, but he was.
He is the evidence tech.
Oh, that's Jess, yeah. And then James is sort of his like number two guy and he was the one that was put in charge, yeah.
Not Jess.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The one.
Yeah. So I, I'm not sure.
When, when we got them, we thought that James and Frank would have the two pro licenses. When we first started this, Jess wasn't even part of the equation. I think the reason that Frank assigned them as he did is that both Jess and James are more comfortable using the system than Frank is, but he got himself in a bind when neither one of them were able to be there to access something that needed to be accessed.
So it's assigned, so even when Jess goes out, leave for a month or so.
It's his.
Yeah.
It's his. So can that one not be reassigned?
It's not, it's not.
Can we renegotiate this? I mean, I don't understand.
But he's evidence, so he has to have it.
Yeah.
He, yeah, he has to have it.
We, we, we're being asked to spend another two thousand dollars for a four year license or something that our own police chief, who was at the top of the chain of command, can't have access to? This is, doesn't make a lot of sense.
Everybody's camera is assigned to a particular individual.
Right, we understand that.
And the, and the license is linked to the camera. So Jess wouldn't hand his camera to the chief, therefore the license is non-transferable.
And why would he not?
Because it would be recor- re- recorded as being somebody, somebody different wearing it.
But he's the, Jess is the evidence person. Does he see all the footage?
He does.
Yeah, so, okay. Um, so it's not necessarily his camera. The pro lets him see everybody else's camera.
Correctly, right, right.
Right. It, I, I just somehow it seems like we've spent, you know, I, I, we want these body worn cameras, but I will point out, we thought they were fourteen thousand and suddenly, then we had a grant, um, and suddenly we learned they're twice as much, they're twenty eight thousand. And then the cost she's, keep going up. It's, it's a little vague and I feel like we did include in the payment that we made, we somehow should be covered for the.
We only got the two.
I'm sorry?
We only got two.
Right, and so we should make sure we have two that.
So now Frank is saying that that was an error, we needed three.
Well, why isn't that a position rather than an, an individual that has the right to review? So if it's the chief and someone, and the, and someone else.
Evidence.
An evidence, and when the evidence guy's off, we have a deputy evidence guy.
It, it can't go to a different person. It, it has to be.
Yeah, it's just totally not transparent.
But this, but you know, what's so troubling about, this seems to be a proprietary issue, not a governmental issue. That the, that the vendor of this thing is creating conditions basically to create scarcity and more cost for us.
It's an evidentiary issue.
Chain of custody is our responsibility. There are, there are ways to maintain the chain of custody that don't require excluding your chief from having access to the evidence. I, I'm, I'll put my guy on the stand and trust that he's got a chain of custody. This is, Ellen, this is the, the problem I've had with all of this technology we're introducing. It's all proprietary, it's all money making at the expense of governments. It's part of the issue.
Can we get a, um, I'm sorry, I bounce this back committee, but can we get a greater clarification on this? So that everyone has a better feel about it. Thank you. All right. Any other questions on public, was there a fire department? No, this, no? No, okay. Um, we sort of were, you're, you're, and you're a busy boy, George.
We, uh, we did, we did have the five years.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And she was. Trying to.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so motion to accept public safety?
Sure.
By Hannah, second by Sydney, all in favor of that.
Aye.
Moving on, double day field committee?
Um, well, I just happened to have the World Class timing last night walking to Kippa. Here finds Roberto, the truck driver in front of the annex building. And I was like, are those the bleachers? And he rolled down the window and he was like, I'm lost and confused. So I.
They were, but they. Everybody, I, I got a phone call and, um, I, in my vehicle led, um, Roberto to the proper parking place.
Oh, good.
Those were not the bleacher seats, those are the, um.
The risers. Right.
Well, no, they're the, um, superstructure. So the cement bases have all been poured, those will go in. Then the bleachers, the risers and all will be, um, installed. And that'll be another shipment. But this one, by the end of, um, the week, should be all in place. It's very exciting.
Very exciting. Um, so aside from that, there was a couple other things to bring to your attention. Uh, Zach was approached by someone from Turface, uh, which is a field conditioning product. They would like to condition double day field while demonstrating to other field managers how their product works.
What's in it for them?
They get to demonstrate how their product works.
Do they get to say they demonstrated or they put their product down on, um, double day field?
Sure they do. Yeah.
That, that's, um, that's a marketing value, significant marketing value.
It is, but according to Zach, it's worth five to ten thousand dollars and a lot of games have been rained out because we don't use this product currently.
Can you tell us what Turface is?
I cannot. Zach tried to explain it to me, I'm not following.
It sounded almost synthetic and I was just wondering what it was.
Yeah.
I think it's company name.
He said they use it already, um, at a very limited capacity. Maybe Mitch can answer.
Oh, so it is more of, of an application to real grass and we use it already.
Right, we just, it hasn't been done on the full field from what I can understand. Um.
Well, i- is it like in- introducing a synthetic material that will work its way into the soil of the grass?
Okay, here, here's what it is. Turface Athletics Quick Dry. It's designed to, um, basically dry up the field. It's calcamine clay, absorbs water. And, uh, by absorbing the water will allow the field to be ready. Than just allowing it to drain off naturally. So that's what this thing says it is. So, okay, I buy it.
Turface needs to provide, you know, they're, they will conduct a demonstration conference while they install it.
Yeah, so I basically left it with Zach that we.
Yeah, so they need to produce, submit a proposal for the whole board.
Yes. That's, that's where we left it. We need something in writing from them. Um, just wanted to bring that to your attention, but it's.
And it would be great to get some data on performance elsewhere because if you put this on the field and the field's bugging up as a result, that's a big, uh, factor of it.
Mitch does, Mitch does point out that it goes on the infield dirt, not on the grass.
That's helpful.
I was gonna say, they, the only area that kind of gets covered if it rains is the infield, so, so it must be, yeah. But, um, yeah, just a proposal, um, and, you know, who's being invited to a demonstration on our field, et cetera, a lot of those questions. Thank you. Thank you very much, Hannah.
Right. Yeah, definitely. Um, and then the committee will also be working on the double day application. Um, there is one major spot where they wanted to add a checkbox if the teams will be bringing their own umpire or not, because apparently that's caused a lot of issues. Um, so that is not something we're working on quickly. We'll be working on it through the season, for next year.
That was just, I'll just point out, having learned some very new swear words a few years ago, when there was, and I wrote a couple of coaches, um, that was rewritten a few years ago. We used to say they had to use, and it was in there, and it was an illegal contract that the village had at some point, that they said they had to use a particular, um, umpire service. We don't care.
Right.
But, and we have a list if they want. They can call us and we have some very good umpires, but they neither have to use ours.
Right.
We don't even wanna get into, are they checking or not? You know, they either need to bring their own or they have one or they cannot have one.
Right. That was all discussed during the committee too, because many of those people have been on the committee for a long time during that whole process. So the biggest thing was there were teams showing up without umpires expecting that we were providing them.
I think it's pretty clear in that double day application.
We're, right, so we're going through the whole application. Basically, all they wanna do is add one checkbox that says, are you bringing an umpire? And are they certified? Um, because apparently that's been an issue too.
Again, I bet you, um, I'd be mad to know.
I can have the exact.
I'd be careful how you worded that, Hannah.
I, I understand that. I do have the language and maybe I didn't bring it with me.
Because if, if, if you. If you worded it that way, I could interpret it to say, well, if you're not bringing, then we'll supply one. You have to specifically say we're not.
No, that's not what the, or you don't need one.
Or you don't need one, yeah, that's the other option.
Yeah.
I think, why wouldn't they need one?
The logic of that sentence.
They called it on muscle strikes.
Because this is where it is. They don't need to have one. There, the organization that had got their foot in the door and was on a village contract saying we, that you had to use that blankety blank ex, uh, um, umping organization,
Right.
um, had like a little fee out there. And the village was getting screamed at for actions of the umpire. We don't get paid by the umpires. Um, and when I say village, I mean.
It was also the umpires suddenly decided we were not providing them with adequate close enough parking.
Our team.
And so they would not, they, we had teams showing up. And this was the only people they could use. They said were wanna use these umpires and the umpires said, we're not. I was in Albany and I got a call from all these teams saying, the umpires have just gone on strike. And we pay you guys five hundred dollars.
But you don't care what they do.
We have people here that umpire, we're being told that we don't have authority. We have to use these people. Which was ridiculous. So we revamped the contract. I, this board saw.
He got a nicer version. I got the, your, um, village has, um, is not allowing our umpire. And I said, we have no relationship with it. You don't pay them if they don't show. And it was intense. Um, because the umpire walked off the field in a hissy fit because he could no longer park up by where we put the new third base building. It was just craziness. So, um, really, I understand, and I know you have people on your committee that have been on there for a long time. But the bottom line is that contract was rewritten. We don't care.
You, you can bring your own, you wanna play without one. If you wanna hire those guys, then it's fine. But we got, it was a horrific mess.
I do understand all of that. I think from the perspective of Zach and from, um, Marcia, it's kind of causing a little bit of issues on their end. So it's not a big change, it's a simple, there was like, I wish I brought it with me, but I grabbed the wrong piece of paper. There's literally like one board that wanted to be added and then just, will there be an umpire there? Like, will you be providing your own umpire? Do you need, I don't even wanna say that. If you need, we have a list of contacts in the area that are.
Well, the board will probably be voting on that.
Yeah.
So we'll get some more information. I just, I do know we had a horrific situation for a couple of days.
Yes.
And the thing is, those contracts went out last October, so whatever contract.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we're not working on it very quickly because it's for next season. That's another thing that we wanna add.
Yeah, so, as long as we've adopted, looked at the language and adopted it by August or September, we'll be in good shape for the next year.
Yeah.
Cause I know, um, we do need to add some additional fees in there.
We also want to add language about, um, the live streaming because that has recently been something that's coming into the office a lot for Marcia. Um, so we just wanna add a policy that's in the contract so that they can see that from the start, so she doesn't have to answer the question over and over again. And then there was another thing brought up by Zach that like some of these tournaments that we take in have caused damage to double day and they're led to discussion of should there be security cameras? It was very split. Anyway, um, but just letting you know if anyone has opinions on that, um, if there should be more language in the contract about who's responsible if there is damage done.
You're gonna wanna secure deposit because many of these teams are coming from out of state and we won't have the jurisdictional ability to do anything here. You'll have to go out of state to sue them. And that's gonna be cost prohibitive. So you really wanna, if you're concerned, if we're getting some teams vandalizing, you're gonna wanna make sure we captured their money upfront and we make the determination when to return it.
Okay, so I think that might be something that we should work on language with you, Martin, because according to Zach, there's a couple tournaments that have regularly caused damage. And there's nothing that's.
What type of damage are they causing?
Just, one of them last year broke the box for the, all my terminology. The thing with the scoreboard buttons.
Scoreboard box, okay.
The thingy.
That thing.
Martin, I think we need two more cameras for the board.
More coffee, please.
Oh.
Um, but I think we were also discussing like with the new build, um, there was questions of should we be either charging for the use of the locker rooms, which
That's right. So I do think there's plenty to, um,
could then be problematic or.
Let's, um, why don't you have Marcia send around the contract, um, you know, with the revisions that your board and we'll continue to look at it. I pulled the one, it was twenty one when we were getting incredibly screamed at. And right now, um, uh, on their contract, it says, and it's underlined in bold, the village of Cooperstown does not supply or schedule umpire. See page three for umpire information. And then that gives them the ability to contact them or not. Um, it's, it's on them. I'm, I'm gonna advocate that we leave it that way. I think the minute we get involved and say, well, I checked, I wasn't gonna bring one, then why didn't you give me one? Because I have to tell you, it was, it, it was an intense situation and the village was in a very bad light and didn't need to be because we shouldn't have been advocating for a private umpiring organization.
Right, just to reiterate, I don't think they wanted to add a, we will provide one. They just wanted to know if they were bringing their own. But we can table this and we'll come up with that much.
Yeah.
They also believed that they must have an umpire. We, our insurance didn't require it, those. So if they were imposing some of their own rules to ensure that they were umpiring, and then it just evolved somewhere.
Well, so we actually got deep into that conversation too because, um, I know the members of the committee from the Hall of Fame were very shocked that the village didn't require an umpire. But then we were saying, Zach was saying that whenever a team comes and they use like a parent umpire or something, it usually causes a lot more issues for the teams or the field staff. So it's just a big conversation to have about how to make our field staff's life easier. There's very few of them and I would like to advocate with them.
Well, definitely it needs work. We knew that we, particularly with our new, um, third base facility and locker rooms, we probably would need to be increasing some fees. I think the field rental fee for tournaments, et cetera, maybe, everything should be addressed and so we can start assembling that data and doing some recommendations.
I have to clarify a question of Martin. You said we should get a deposit? Your favorite deposit.
If you're, if there's vandalism, the only way you're going to protect the village is through some form of security deposit.
Okay, great.
Because you can, I mean, if they're from Georgia or Pennsylvania, unless you wanna pay me, you go down there and be, ad hoc.
January, we'll do that.
Okay, yeah.
So it's just, it's, yeah, we, the best way to do it is we have a, a good security deposit system. They get it back if they haven't done anything, so they shouldn't be too worried about that.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to accept double day field? My Sydney second by Hannah, and all in favor.
Aye.
Moving on to streets committee.
All right, so on the first page of your streets committee minutes, you will see first bullet under trolley that we are moving forward with the plan to offer a pre-trolley daily pass, not a season pass, but a daily pass to those who park their boat trailers either at the blue lot or at the yellow lot. There was discussion that the red lot, because of the way it's configured, it's very hard to park trailers there. So the county is working on getting this all straightened out with DOT. I'm bringing it up now because it will be in this village voices. So everyone should be aware that that is.
And that a dollar twenty-five, is it coming out of the trolley enterprise fund?
It would, I think that would make sense unless we find that hundreds of people are doing this, but I don't think that will be the case.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, and then if you flip to page two, our favorite subject, parking, it's down at the bottom of the page. Um, first bullet point, you may remember that last time we were together for our main board meeting, there was a question about parking on Railroad Avenue um, by the distillery. There are currently two hour spots there as there are much of Railroad Avenue because it is our hopefully up and coming business district. Um, in looking back at what was submitted when that expansion took place, there were on the property of the distillery 11 spaces designated for parking. There was the stipulation that six of those had to be exclusively for employee parking. I drove by today. It did not appear that they're all being utilized. It is probably easier to use on street parking, but there's a two hour limit. So it's the recommendation of the streets committee to keep that two hour limit as it stands.
Thank you.
Did, was there any, if I can ask, was there any discussion with Gene Mara on that point since he appeared here?
Uh, Gene has not been here. Gene's employee was here.
Right.
Um, I'm happy to follow up with Gene. Um, to, it, it took until today really to get the, the point and word and it seems like man.
Good point. I would share those with him too.
Yeah, we'll print them out and make sure he gets a, gets a hard copy so he knows what was proposed. Um, the bullet point under that, I think this actually falls under our, um, under our additional agenda, but it may be easier to do this now. We have been working with ATI to get the kiosk screens correct for both the trolley and for the parking kiosks. This has not been an easy task. Um, but one question did come out of this. I mean, we know what we proved, right? Two fifty for an hour, five dollars for two hours surcharge on the parking table and three hundred increments. You would think it would go more smooth. Um, but the question that they have raised that is worth discussing is do we take American Express? So we take Visa, MasterCard, Discover. We haven't had American Express in the past in doing the math. It's always a little hard to tell exactly what the fees will be because these are small transactions. American Express usually charges somewhere in the realm of three point five percent, which is higher than other cards. But it's my understanding, American Express doesn't charge merchants like us a per transaction fee. So in the end, on a five dollar charge, I think it will work out to be perfectly fine and covered by our 25 cent fee. The one time there may be a loss is if someone uses an American Express card in double day field and they buy a fifteen dollar all day pass. Because then the three point five percent would be more than 25 cents. That said, all of our cards sort of work like that. And in the end, we didn't calculate this like per transaction, but on an average. And given the small number, we should, I think, be fine, but we need to make a call on whether we want Amex to be one of our cards.
I'm surprised it's only three point five. At one point I was handling the box office for a ticket company.
Five percent.
And, uh, they, American Express was almost double what Visa and MasterCard were.
That makes sense because Visa and MasterCard are often in the one point, something. But they have a transaction fee.
Okay.
So it, I mean, honestly, sometimes some of our cards go up to seven percent when you tack on all of the various fees that are associated with a two dollar and fifty cent charge, which is why lots of merchants say you got to charge ten dollars to make this order allow.
Let's see the report.
So I'll make a motion that we take American Express.
Motion made by Cindy, seconded by Hannah, all in favor?
I think that, right.
All right, last thing I want to bring to your attention is under trees. Um, because the date that was set tentatively for our Arbor Day celebration has, um, changed. It will now be May 23rd, which is a Tuesday at 11:30 AM. That will allow Rotary members to participate, um, in this just before their meeting. It will be on Church Street, um, near the Presbyterian Church House and Templeton Hall. Please join here.
Did you say 11 AM or 11:30?
11:30.
Eleven, 11:30. Um, any questions on streets?
What kind of trees are we planting?
We are planting red buds.
Two red buds.
Okay, nice.
There are overhead lines, so we need to define shorter trees.
Makes sense.
You said it's going to be, um, church and pining?
Uh, church.
It's on Church Street, but, um.
Nearish Pioneer Inn.
Yeah, it's in front of the, um, church house. So motion to accept streets committee? Uh, George, seconded by.
I saw Hannah fall out there.
All right. Buildings.
I'm sorry, buildings committee. Um, the report is pretty much here. We talked about some things of interest that we talked about. One, Mitch thinks the elevator is working. Um, we, so far, I haven't heard of any problems since we last had that discussion. Uh, we had a discussion about the window restorations. Uh, what is, what's the name of the?
Richardson?
What's the, what's?
Richardson?
No, the government organization.
Chipo.
Chipo.
Chipo approved.
Chipo approved it, so we can go ahead with it with reasonable expectation that we will be partially or however the reimbursement is worked out, however we use their money. We had no request for the fire department. Um, I'm going to go on a tour with Mitch of our buildings so that I have an idea of what our inventory is. And there was a discussion on, um, a brief discussion on the comments of whether or not we need air conditioning in this building. And after doing a rough analysis of the cost, after looking at what employees feel they need. And, um, basically, we've decided that we do not need to completely re-HVAC this building, which is what it would take to put air conditioning in it. So we're deferring it at least until global, global warming gets worse.
Can I ask a question on the windows?
Sure.
In the ballroom, the, the concept of screens and storms, are, are the, is either of those items going to be stored in place? Or are we going to have to take, hop out the room and find a place to put them? Because we already have the ballroom corner stacked with doors and.
I don't know.
It looks kind of.
So the doors are going back into the closet that they came out of now that the windows are done. They couldn't be in the closet while we're doing that.
They kept the chairs outside now. The chairs are kept outside?
No, the chairs go in the, the.
Little room in the back.
Little space we go.
Yeah, that's, okay. Oh, that's what I thought you said.
Yeah, no, the doors go in a different place. They've been there for years and years and we just never knew that because they get hidden on the window where she was going on. Um, but to answer your question, the frames would be in place and the screens and the storms would be exchanged seasonally. So they will need to be stored.
And that, and so the storms would give us a thermal barrier that we would need.
I. Just so you know, I was chatting with Cindy about this. Historically, buildings was this building. And at one point, it kind of expanded.
You made a mention.
But obviously, buildings in the parks need to be addressed by parks. And the fire hall needs to be addressed by public safety. You're meeting with them. Otherwise, we're asking volunteers to report to two different committees and it's, it's not an efficient use of their time. So buildings is pretty much this building.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I still, I still would just like to take one quote.
All right.
We'll get what we own.
Yeah.
I was, I was.
A motion to accept buildings committee?
You want me to bring up, Cindy pointed out that I should.
There's, there's two action items.
Uh, we're advertising for a part-time cleaner and we've decided that the window grates should be sandblasted and repainted rather than replaced. It'd be a lot cheaper.
Didn't we, um, approve going for the part-time cleaner last month?
We didn't approve it. It was pending a RFP.
Right, and if the RFP wasn't reasonable, which it did, turned out it wasn't, I thought we were moving.
I wasn't sure if there was actually a motion to do that.
All right, so we can do, we can do it again.
Yeah, and we just want to make sure we're on the same page with how many hours and exactly hourly rates so we can advertise the correct.
Yeah, Mitch, Mitch had sort of calculated that out, so, all right. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
For part-time cleaner?
Part-time cleaner.
And.
That was up to 19 hours a week, correct?
Correct, twenty-two dollars an hour.
Yeah. Yeah. So did you hear that, Jenna?
Yeah.
Nineteen hours, okay. Um, and the motion's been made, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the window grates to be sandblasted and painted.
Painted.
Are we going to get a quote or?
I think we, I think we are doing it, aren't we?
The plan was to have it taken out to be sandblasted, which will be below the threshold and then to have our approval.
Below the threshold, oh.
Oh, we have to get bids.
Okay, so we think it's like less than thirty thousand or whatever?
Oh, I, I think it's might be less than five thousand. I mean, it's just these grates that are over here. They're going to come out, they're going to need to come out when the work is done on these windows. And it makes sense while they're out to do the work.
Okay. Okay, we're going to get quotes or there's no, only one company? Because we are supposed to get three quotes or something, right?
We can, we can, we can work on getting quotes. I don't think that there are others that do this, but.
That many companies? All right, all right. And to be painted by the village too. That's part of the motion. All right, so that's your motion, seconded by Cindy, all in favor?
I think I made a.
Um, okay, motion to accept the ladies committee report?
Second.
I'll move.
Thank you.
I'll second. I thought you said.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we're finally at treasuries. And so I'll just bring your attention to the fact that the first four items are, um, on the additional agenda should be thrown in there as well. And then under personnel, the seasonal labor.
Right, so I'll start with, uh, with the supplement second. Um, you had your length of service, uh, most, the OSAP statement from Martin's unit packet. And there's also the quarterly, uh, statement to them from the treasurer's office. The finance committee, uh, reviewed the bank records simulations, uh, on last Thursday. Um, the sales tax report, I don't, hadn't come in.
We didn't think so yet.
Yeah, I didn't think so, hasn't been a day, so we're pending that. Uh, but the trend in the sales tax has been favorable, uh, month over month and year over year for us this fiscal year. We need to declare surplus, the, uh, Elgin sweeper, the 2011 Elgin sweeper that will arrange to be sold at Offspring's International. And so I move a declaration on the Elgin sweeper as surplus for sale.
Seconded by Cindy, all in favor?
Aye.
In your packet, we have the access technology maintenance agreement, uh, for the parking season, day one to April 3rd. And that's in the amount of nine thousand dollars. I move the, the payment of that.
Second.
Seconded by Cindy, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have a second access technology invoice, the monthly, basically subscription, the access fee, uh, that amounts to seventy-eight hundred dollars. It's a staggering rate in season. It's higher than in the off-season, but we still have a minimal amount to pay, uh, in the off-season for, um, for this service. So I move the payment of the seventy-eight hundred dollar monthly access fees for access technology.
Seconded. Seconded by Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have a municipal advisory services agreement, which is something we go through annually. Um, in, as you'll see in your packet, there are not to exceed limits in different forms of service that they provide. Um, in my experience, this is a routine, um, uh, sort of fee schedule thing established for us. And it's identified in the exhibits to the letter. We need to approve the mayor's signing of, uh, that municipal advisory services agreement and I make that motion.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Cindy, all in favor?
Aye.
We have capital project invoices, uh, to approve or to review or approve. In your packet, we have the double day field GT grandstands invoice number two zero nine one eight zero in the amount of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and I move the approval.
Second.
Seconded by Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
Again, for double day field, the Schuler Haas pay app number eight, the retainage, uh, in the amount of five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. I move that we release that and paint it if you don't.
Second.
Seconded by, I'm sorry, it's Hannah, all in favor?
Aye. Right, again, for double day field, Schuler Haas pay app number seven, in the amount of eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eleven cents. I move the approval of that payment.
Second.
Seconded by Hannah, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, in double day field, again, the SJP invoice number C key dash nineteen dash zero four dash twenty-eight in the amount of three thousand, twenty-eight dollars. I move the approval of that payment.
Second.
Seconded by Hannah, all in favor?
Aye.
For double day field, the bunk off pay application number fourteen, the amount of ninety-three thousand, seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents. I move the approval of that payment.
Second.
Seconded by Hannah, all in favor?
Aye.
For our third, for our window restoration project under Richardson Window Works, uh, a pay app from Richardson Window Works in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. I move the approval of that payment.
Second.
Seconded by Cindy, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, back to double day field, um, the retrofit suns pay app number two one zero zero six dash zero 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 seven in the amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. I move the approval of that payment.
Seconded by Hannah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For double day field, Delaware Engineering, the third base building leakers, professional services invoice number four in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. I move the approval of that payment.
Seconded by Hannah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I'll jump over there to, uh, before going to personnel, to our supplemental packet, um, from Delta Engineering. And by the way, all of these things I can read from are set out in the heat that I'm in the packet. So if people have questions about any of this specifics, we, we, that's a silver rubber stamping. They have been reviewed by our engineers. Um, for the Hoffman Lane Pioneer Room, uh, we have a Delta Engineering invoice number four in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. I move the approval of that payment.
Seconded by George, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, and we discussed, so this is what we were discussing earlier. And have we now disposed of that with your motion?
Correct. Yeah.
Um, for Delaware Engineering, we have a change order number six. This sounds like gambling. The final over-under for the Grove Street COVID project was an increase of thirty-two thousand dollars to the total project cost. I move the approval of that increase.
Second.
Seconded by Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
And for the Grove Street COVID project, we have a pay application number four, completing construction in the amount of fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and twenty-five cents. I move the approval of that payment.
Seconded by, yes sir, George, this sum, that's still leaving the retainage, Cindy, that we need to retain?
Well, that's what I'm trying.
Uh, Mitch said yes.
It does.
With one of these asteroids, so.
But where, where is that number fifty-six, seven, ten? Because I'm seeing thirty-two.
Thirty-two was the change order, but the payout was fifty-six.
Is that in here, Matt?
That is in there. It's in tiny writing on the actual payout. What was it?
It's this, it's.
Yeah, you know, there, this page, Cindy, it talks about, there is still retainage. Yeah, you know, there, this page, Cindy, it talks about, there is still retainage in there. Okay, great. It's a payment in fifty-six thousand, seven, ten, twenty-five, but the retain interim is the thirty-six, so.
It's eighty-six.
Okay. So, the motion has been made and seconded, that was just some discussion, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have a new employee status to inform up to hire a seasonal laborer unit for the streets of Parkland, paying you seventy dollars an hour, and I move the approval of that hiring.
Second by Sidney, all in favor?
Aye.
We have the overtime analysis, the leave analysis, and we do have a specific request for a Sydney Bank.
Transfer.
Yeah. Here.
Yeah, Lawrence Stilson. Mr. Stilson has requested authority to draw from the Sydney Bank, once his accumulated time and other leave time has been exhausted, and I move the approval of his withdrawal.
Motion by Joe, I'll second that one, all in favor?
Aye.
This is our.
We do need to, we are now, we have to hire the boat wash attendant, that is a new employee, is, well. That's in addition to the one we just approved.
Yes.
Right, one says seasonal labor for really streets, this is our boat wash attendant that we're putting on?
And I move we approve the hiring of the boat wash attendant.
Motion made, second by Sidney, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'd require the change transaction for employees is in the Treasurer's Office, as well as, as you'll see under planets, on the next page, item three, the change transaction inquiry regarding the status of vendors that serve the village. I move the approval of the abstracts and transfers that are identified in this packet.
Second.
Second by Cindy, all in favor?
Aye.
And I don't need, we don't have to approve the abstract accounts paid me for, do we?
Yeah, no.
Alright, so I think that concludes my report.
Motion to accept the Treasurer's report?
I have the Treasury.
Second by Sidney, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to grants and projects update, as Hannah reported, she saw our superstructure for our stadium seating arriving and driving around town, and it was all offloaded this morning and is being installed this week. Then, we'll be getting a shipment in a couple weeks of the actual seats, and that is just, the project's going really well. Probably if you've been to the field, you've noticed the southern wingwell, I'm sorry, the northern wingwall, and then the southern base is already in there, they kind of built it, covered it up in order to get this superstructure for the stadium in, so few little snafus, and this project will be winding down soon, very exciting. We sort of had an update on the window restoration, would you like to say anything about it, Cindy?
Only that the ballroom windows upstairs are completed, they still have signs on them that say, "Don't touch the lidoes" because the cutty on the outside is curing. But they look beautiful, if you haven't been up there.
They do.
Yeah, great improvement. Grove Street Culvered, we did make a payment on that tonight, as you're probably aware, there's, was damaged one of the curb areas, but Tweety has worked with the village and the engineering, Delaware Engineering Lake, and the, they need a quantity of cement, and it's sort of not very much, and so we're going to be using the cement pour at Double Day in order to have them have some cement to repair the broken curb and the planting area, and then that'll be done. That's why both Cindy and I were making sure that the retainage was still there, because that has to be completed. Anything on the Hoffman Lane Pioneer?
No, I just have not heard an update lately.
Okay. New York Forward, of course, everyone's very excited, some people think we're already handing out money, not at all. And just if anyone does have inquiries, please tell them I wrote a little word for the Village Voices, which will be coming out with our water and sewer bills, but just tell them, go to the Village website. Any updates we have will be on the New York Forward dropdown, there is the application there, and also the status, and the status is what it is, I even checked today to see if there could be anything. Every text that's on there has been approved, and so there's nothing more to put out there at this point.
Is there, would it be helpful to the public, because I don't know that it's there, or didn't see it, if it is there, the milestone process that people go through, so we are here at this stage, that's that, because people will say, well, when we're getting it, when are we getting it? Well, we just have to have the committee approve, we have to have.
I think the descriptor, you haven't been to the website? Okay, so there is a description of where we are in the process now, and how that will move forward, so that's pretty much what we know at this point, so hopefully that's explanatory. I did ask Jenna to run these, I had started a new kind of ad hoc committee called Welcome Home Cooperstown, and I have to say, I've got a great bunch of volunteers on this committee, and we have been brainstorming meetings, probably about five meetings over the past couple of months, but we're now at the point, we're gonna hold our first monthly meet and greet, and it will be next Tuesday, May 2nd, upstairs, in the sort of library foyer, spilling into the library a little bit, and there'll be cookies and beverages, and we're hoping that young, new people that have moved to the Village will come, and those of us who've been here and would like to meet new people and welcome them to our community, with the goal that we would love to have them make Cooperstown their home. So, that's, there's a press release that will be in the paper this week, as well as on all outlets you go. Moving on, Parks Board.
Okay, before we have any recommendations, I just wanted a quick update. And the biggest update is, or there's really two updates, so the signage for Council Rock, I talked to Will Walker, our newest Parks Board member, who's sort of leading that effort, he is going to get an idea of the timeline for that, and we're hopeful that it'll be a sooner rather than later addition, so just wanted to put that out. Like for a concert series, almost all of the dates are settled, or all of the bands are settled. We are looking to having a really great season for that, kicking off with Han Solo, which is very exciting. And then, the only thing that's not on this, not on the minutes, because it happened yesterday, is that the rink has been rolled up. We did it, I still have dirt under my fingernails, but, but it's done, so that is all set. And I guess the, the big point of discussion is the parking at Fish Road. So it is the Parks Board recommendation to set aside eight parking spots for trailers, and all other parking spots would be just for cars, or, you know. I will say, I, I, I saw Cindy's email about the way in which that might be.
Worked.
Yeah, work, so whether it's a more prohibitive, I don't know, do you want to sort of explain what it is that you mentioned?
Yeah, so the way our parking law generally works.
Yeah.
It tells you what you can't do, not what you can do. So you can't park for more than two hours, you can't. So, from that perspective, it would be easier to say on Fish Road, you can't park a trailer on this side, than to say you can park a trailer on the other side. The exceptions to that are, so there are provisions in New York State Code for Village official parking, right? For like firefighter parking, there are some particular, you know, you can designate spaces for these uses. I could not find, and I did not search exhaustively, but I did spend like more than fifteen minutes looking for places that have specific boat-trailer parking on the street, and that's just such an unusual situation, I think, that I couldn't find it. So my suggestion would be maybe to, to say where it's prohibited.
Okay.
And, and also to think about when we want that to happen, right? Because I've, my experience is on Tuesdays, not such a big deal, but on Saturday and Sunday, that's, that's really when the crunch is, and some of you have noticed like front parking more than, than I do. Like, you know, clearly a Tuesday in February, park wherever you want, on Fish Road.
Right, yeah, yeah, so I, I definitely think that the first sort of parameter of this suggestion should be that this be a rule, or that this be enforced through the, the season, right? So, from, now this is gonna be embarrassing, because I remember it's Memorial Day or Labor Day, to.
Well, currently, our two-hour parking
Yeah.
is seasonal, and, and that was the law on Fish Road, so let me see if I can pull that up.
Right. And it's the, unless you have that permit in your window, right? So if you have a boat slip or a kayak slip and you throw that in your window,
Yeah.
that, that becomes.
The inspection.
Right. So, but my question with the, because I do agree, I think that it's easier and clearer to understand where one cannot park, but if we are suggesting that it's gonna be eight spots, and I am counting on the side that has fewer parking spots, that it's about like fourteen spots, and then I think one of those is a Village official spot, or maybe that's on the other side, it's, it's on the other side. So I'm wondering how, I don't want it to be, like, cause you said you could, you know, suggesting it's prohibited to park on this side as a trailer versus this side, but if we're limiting it to eight spots, how, I, I'm not sure what that language would look like.
Yeah, so we made it, we instituted that two-hour time period, it was local law four of two thousand seventeen, change in parking times on Fish Road from the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend through the Monday of Columbus Day.
Okay.
That's what it was.
So, so Cindy, I think my question was, these spaces that are reserved for boat trailers, are they only for boat trailers all the time, like during a late for a concert? Or can, can any type of vehicle park there, including a boat trailer?
This seems really hard to enforce.
See, again.
Well, again, thinking of the fact that our law prohibits things, if you say these are parking spaces, then anybody can park them.
But can, like, can we put a sign on this spot that says, "Boat trailer allowed here?", like. Yeah, I think that's good.
I almost wonder if it's an amendment to this law, Cindy, because listen to, yeah, because listen to this, the, we are saying parking of vehicles is prohibited for a period longer than two hours, that's amending that section, and the parking of vehicles and/or trailers is prohibited for a period longer than two hours on Fish Road, between the hours of nine AM and six PM, from the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend through the Monday of Columbus Day, except for vehicles displaying either a boat launch inspection receipt dated and timed within twenty-four hours, or a season rental receipt for those renting a Village of Cooperstown boat slip or a new kayak rack slip, but in no event may a boat trailer be parked on Fish Road for more than twenty-four hours. So, I almost wonder if it could be almost, you know, just something added into that area, since it's all talking about.
No, I think that, that would be the perfect place to, to do it.
And so the question is, is, is there gonna be trailer-only parking, or is that?
Well, that's, right, cause like if there's not designated trailer spots, and we say there can only be eight, and then the ninth one parks there. Right. How do we know which one was the ninth one? So, no, so my, so the recommendation would be that there are designated spots for trailers, that it wouldn't just be that there are eight spots, are we legally allowed to have that signage?
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah, it's not a New York State sign, but it's our property, certainly come up with a signage that does that.
What is our total parking down there?
Um, so we've got, let me count, hold on.
Two at one time?
Thirty-eight spots and then one Village official spot.
And then like one.
Thirty-eight spots, and that includes two Village spots?
I thought there was only one.
I see one.
Yeah, I think there's only one.
I thought there was two.
There are two.
There's two, okay.
I've only seen one sign.
There's only one sign, but I think it refers.
It's for those two spots, so, so that, so then.
Thirty-six spots.
No, thirty-eight spots and then two Village.
Plus two official, okay.
And then Hannah mentioned that there is one fifteen-minute spot?
Yep, and two accessible spots.
Right.
In addition to the thirty-eight?
I think those are. Those are included within the thirty-eight.
Yeah, in the thirty-eight, that's what I was thinking, so essentially, there's like thirty-eight available spots.
Yeah, there's thirty-eight available spots, one of which is fifteen minutes, two of which are accessible.
Yeah.
So, without any of those, um.
Thirty-five.
Yeah.
Thirty-five spots, okay, I'm just trying to see it on my own.
Yeah, no, yeah, absolutely, so that's.
So now, we're saying eight trailers, it's almost a, a little more than, not quite a quarter.
But we, is it true, though, that we don't want, we want to permit, but we don't want to reserve eight trailer spots? In other words, it's first come, first served, if you park your vehicle down there, you can park it in a trailer spot?
That's what I would prefer.
That's what I think makes sense.
But is it possible, how do you know, who's the eighth, who's the ninth trailer?
Well, you, you mark, I mean, you mark it out on a map.
Yeah, so there's, there's eight marked, so what I, what I think you're saying, but I might have gotten, I might have heard this wrong, that we would have eight marked spots, but if someone comes in a car and chooses to park their car in a trailer spot, that's just taking up one of the spots.
They get to do it, cause it's first come, first served, otherwise, you're.
Right. I mean, in the same vein that if, in, in the past, if you came and parked your trailer and then your car, and someone else came and tried, you know, find a parking spot and they didn't, that's essentially the same thing, right?
Yeah, it's a tricky thing, because you do want, if, if you're gonna say, okay, you can park some trailers here, you just don't want to have a day when a lot of vehicles are there and there's no place to park because they're reserved for trailers only, and they go with them.
No, yeah, so I think that it would be, the ideal language would be, um, but I don't, I don't know what this would actually say, but suggesting that these specific eight spots also allow trailers, whereas the rest of them do not.
Trailer or vehicle.
So trailers would be prohibited, for instance, on all the spaces that are on the east side, and in some of the spaces that are on the west side.
My only commentary on that is, on an average summer day, I feel like most of the trailers are parked on the
East side.
East side, yeah, I think it's just easier for us.
Why are you saying that, and a lot of people like to be closer to the park?
I, I say that because the trees drip sap, and parking your car underneath them is sometimes not a wonderful thing to do.
Well, I mean.
Also, I, I would.
Also, people seem to want to park there on the park side.
I, I would point out that
Yeah, I think that.
if the, if, if the intention is to encourage people to park. If the, if, if the intention is to encourage people to park their trailers in the lots, then, then, you know, it doesn't really, if, if we say that they should park on the west side, that's just one, you know, and they want to park on the east, that's just one more reason to not park your trailer at Fish Road. Instead, park in the lot, get a free ride back via the trolley.
You know, Ellen, what you were saying about the bastard, I really, I, I'd never thought about this before, but if we have space, rather than have people deal with the trolley, if people can get to Ferry Spring to park their trailers.
I suggested that for the ones where, um, you know, there might be limited parking and the trolley service wouldn't be running.
Right, but I'm, I'm saying it's, if there is space, you know, in the Natty Bumpo Lot, for example, for people to park their boat trailers and their vehicles and then they walk down and jump in the boat. They have, Ferry Spring, they spend their day there, then they, we don't have any issues with trolley traffic and they're, these people are completely autonomous.
So my question is, um, I think one of the reasons why we were suggesting this as an alternative is because that model, the Ferry Spring model, really only works if there's multiple people in a boat, right? To get your boat to Ferry Spring.
Right.
And then pick, but there's plenty of people who go out by themselves, right? And then to be able to park, you know, there's day slots for that very reason of getting your boat into a spot and then getting out, taking your trailer and your car up to the lot and then coming back and not taking up the room, so.
You know, I think we're, um, we don't exactly have the wording. We're kind of doing, trying to decide it. I think the basis is, you're, you're thinking eight spaces.
Mm-hmm.
Let's throw this back at, um, you know, your committee. And you certainly avail yourself of Cindy's expertise on drafting something. But see if we can't send it around in a week or two. What we could do now is have, um, set a public hearing for our May meeting
Mm-hmm.
to, um, to have a, to look at a Fish Road, um, parking regulations pertaining to trailers.
Yeah, something like to, to limit parking spaces available for boat trailer parking on Fish Road.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Did you get that, Jenna?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, sure, you got it, girl. Um, so that, um, and our meeting is May.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, so, um, I believe we hold a public hearing at seven o'clock or soon thereafter to address Fish, Fish Road parking regulations and, what was it?
And limit boat trailer.
And limit boat trailer.
Parking on Fish.
Yeah, limit boat trailer parking on Fish Road. Seconded by Sydney, all in favor?
Hi. Um, Ellen, could you remind me what the, um, the law, the number of the law that you're, just forgot it.
Well, that, that was the law. I was just trying to see and it was nicely worded there, but it's within our code. So if you go on, I can send you this, but, um, it will be, if you go to Village Code, you'll, for Fish Road, you're gonna see this. I will send that to you.
Okay, great.
All right, is there anything else on Parks Board?
I had one question.
Yes.
And that is, um, under Ferry Spring.
Yes.
There's still a reference to the removal of trees related to those, because the L-digit things. Was my understanding that we weren't removing trees? Because that would take the L-digits somewhere else.
Oh, I.
We aren't, that's if you, um, remove them by cutting them, but you wouldn't remove them. That's the difference.
So the plan is to cut them but leave them?
To leave the limbs. They're, um, um, HWA, okay, what is the sentence?
It says, those to be sprayed and those to be removed.
They are marked, the ones that are to be removed. We've just never done it, because it does entail leaving the branches in situ.
Okay.
The trunks can be transported, because the HWA is not on the trunk.
Hmm.
Um, the reason for that is kind of twofold. The arborist that we had hired for this, handling this infestation had pointed out, look, this, this is one little tree. Are you gonna devote thousands of dollars to try and save it? When there's other trees, it, it doesn't even have the ability to grow. And these two trees are very close together, but only one's gonna really thrive. So it was looking at those issues, but they also did have HWA.
Yep, so it's removed means cutting and leaving on the ground.
Yeah.
All right, or that's not what remove would mean to me, okay?
Cutting, yeah.
The only other thing with Parks is any Parks Boarders' letter or about the diving board. Is that something we discussed?
I don't think we, it's, it's the, the one that we got in the.
She referred it back to her.
I've heard to the committee.
Yep, so I'm, I'm gonna be bringing that to the Parks and Committee Board.
That's right, forgot about that.
And, uh, and we'll, we'll discuss.
You've got the committee.
Yeah.
Hannah's thinking, psh, mine's so easy, I just see superstructure around.
Um, oh, another very minimal update. It's not in the Parks Board Minutes. It's been brought up before, but it also pertains to the public safety. Um, is that it has been suggested before by different caretakers that they would like to, um, meet with the.
I love that, that was great, being proactive on that.
Yeah, so, yep, so we're gonna have a de-escalation training in June. Um, and I, I requested Frank to, so Frank will be, like, having someone lead that. But then I also requested that as many officers as possible join so that the caretakers and lifeguards that are participating in that feel like they know who they're reaching out to and feel extra comfortable. Um, because we have had some issues in the past, but, um, you know, a 16-year-old lifeguard might not exactly know how to deal with. So, um, so I think, I'm, I'm hoping that this sets a, a good tone for the season to come.
Great.
Maybe, maybe we want, we want that training for our umpires, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a free idea, actually.
Tag team, I'll tell you.
But not necessarily umpires, because we don't have those, but.
Touche.
That could be involved.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, so I, I think I'm good.
All right, motion to accept the Parks Board report. By Sydney, seconded by George, all in favor?
Hi.
Union environment?
Um, so we spent much of our meeting talking about Governor Vogel's housing contract, which as of today is probably removed from the state budget. But I think it was a worthwhile exercise nonetheless to think about where there's potentially space for infill and other housing development within, um, the village, whether or not it's required by state statute, something that we want. So it was a useful, um, exercise. And Ellen already spoke about the Welcome Home Cooperstown flyer that you have, which is, uh, my poorly worded summary at the end, which will be amended with the.
I think this is a great, this Welcome Home, it's not, I just wanted to say, I think that's a great idea.
I have to start somewhere.
Yeah, I think I should.
And sometimes it's the human connection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion to accept community and environment. We are broken to give those. George, seconded by Sydney, all in favor?
Hi.
Water and Sewer?
Well, I want to congratulate the Water and Sewer Board on consistently holding the shortest meetings of all boards.
I know, you're happy with it.
This one was six months long. And it was a thorough review of everything going on in both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. And the fellows are doing great work and have everything they have in hand. So I don't have much to add to that. I'm certainly not gonna talk more than six minutes.
I have a question for you.
Sure, go ahead.
The jetting that takes place, I know I've asked this before, but where is that on Fair Street? Just because Fair Street has some street issues as well.
The, that's a good question, where in Fair Street? I thought there, there was, I know we've had to do it in Frog Hollow on Fair Street.
Hmm, okay.
Um, is that below, that, could it, is it below the, um, below lake?
That's, that's what I, I wonder. I, I can check with Mitch.
Yeah, I, I'm actually not sure where.
Yeah, ask him why Fair Street, we are on Fair Street. Um, if there's nothing else, we can accept it and maybe we'll get a reply, we can have the later. So motion to accept Water and Sewer Board? By Hannah, seconded by George, all in favor?
All right.
Um, I did want to, I, I seem to have jumped over it. I do have it on my agenda. And that's the, and a little update on the annexation, the Southern Boundary Extension. The process is going to be twofold. I guess I remember telling you that we do a resolution and Town of Atsigo do a resolution, et cetera. Um, in order to cover all our bases, we, we can't imagine that there's complainants. Um, you know, I think the information meeting went quite successfully. But we're basically going to have the three property owners involve, the railroad, the county, and the village. Um, sign a petition, which will go to the Town of Atsigo requesting this jurisdictional change. And then there can be separate resolutions by each board and the joint one.
It'll be a, yeah.
It'll be a cleaner, cleaner process, shall we say.
Will we be having another joint board meeting then?
You'll have to have one more joint board meeting to pass a joint resolution.
Oh, no.
No, but it'll, it should be with the three, all three affected parties joining.
With the petition, yeah.
The petition, then it really becomes a fait accompli, so to speak.
And to, to who is the petition submitted?
The Town of Atsigo, because the property's currently in the Town of Atsigo.
So the, the only other item we have here is this.
Right, so now we're at, um, the 2023-24, um, Cooperstown budget. Um, so it's the one that looked like tentative number three. Um, and, uh, you might, I don't know, do you have it in your packet? I can, yeah. I, I was eager for it, I'm hot off the press and I stole one from Jenna, so I wasn't, I didn't.
I just want to note one change on that the seasonal labor for the Parks Caretaker was omitted from the one we used.
From the one I received. But it is in the one we did.
We did it and I did not get copies, because it was at the end of that.
All right.
So that is another change that would be there. It was already approved, it just wasn't actually written.
All right. All right. So, um, there are a motion to adopt the tentative budget as the adopted 2023-24 Village of Cooperstown budget. And the budget resolution is attached right there.
Do, do we want to fix that fixed camera system number to avoid the same discussion that we had tonight happening again?
Well, we don't know the actual amounts, because he wasn't able to get quotes.
But we do know that the math that is shown on the tentative number three is wrong, right? Because 3,000 plus 5,000 doesn't equal 15,000.
But 5,000 was already in there, so it was more.
I, you were saying 10 to 12,000 for three.
Yeah, 10 to 12, so.
Right, so I believe, if you turn to page nine.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing changes in the column that's on, that's the amount, right? It's still 15,000. But in the notation, I believe it should say vest and plates, new uniform equipment, cargo storage unit, 3,596, that's what it says. And then fixed camera system should say 11,404.
Okay, that isn't really a budget change, because we aren't changing in amount. But we can ask Deb to make that correction to the, um, display there.
And there's more to it as well. There's the extension, the poles and the.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I agree with you. I just, my mind works better when the numbers add up.
Right, but that, I, I, that's where the rest of this cost would be identified, including poles and conduit and whatever.
Yep.
All right, so that amount was 11,000, what?
404.
404, all right. All right, it's a, really not a change to the budget. It's the amount stays the same, so there you go.
So I'll make a motion to approve tentative number three as the final budget for 2023.
2023-24 year, okay. A motion made, seconded by Sydney, all in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Great. And then, um, our upcoming meetings, um, we came off April, where it seemed we were meeting quite frequently. To this, our next meeting will be May 22nd. And that's 6:30.
Now, now I can have the doughnuts.
Are we having, are we having an executive session? Are we having an executive session?
To discuss coordination issues.
There is nothing occurring right now. Do you like it?
I feel uncomfortable about.
But before we just stop bringing it up, then move to, make motion to move to executive session. We can always come out of it. We have to move to executive session to discuss litigation before the village. It has to be, there's the motion, seconded by Sydney, all in favor?
Aye.